Okay.
Thanks. So, call to order, a regular meeting of the Wellington Board of Selectmen, Monday, June 1st, 2020, 6:32 PM. I'll start with the chat feature that we utilized a couple of days ago during our meeting is not on. And if any resident looks like so far, everyone who's on is on video and can hear us. If you would like to speak at present to speak, if you could click on the Participants tab, and you have an opportunity to raise your hand there, and we'll utilize that to recognize those who want to speak at present to speak. Okay, so I'll start. The first item on our agenda is approval of our minutes. We have two sets. The first set of minutes is from our May 18th meeting. I will move to accept the May 18th, 2020 minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Seconded by John. Any discussion? Right, so you know, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries. The second set were from last Wednesday, May 27th. I will move to accept the May 27th meeting minutes as presented.
I'd have a question. I don't believe I got those minutes, Robin. Were they sent
So, Liza, you didn't get them either?
I didn't see them either. I was just double checking my email, but I do have a little bit of a backlog in the email.
Okay, so I will withdraw my motion, and I'll put them on our next agenda. I mean, they're certainly very thorough. Minutes are a very important meeting, so give you both the opportunity to really go through them.
Okay.
Yes, Robin?
They did go to the town clerk. Maybe she didn't submit, send them through town.
But do you usually send them to John and Liza separate?
No, I don't. I don't usually send them to them, but I can. I'm sorry.
They usually come to me through the town.
All right, let me make sure.
So.
Let's see if they're on the...
I think she got them on Friday.
They are not posted. Okay, so they're not posted online. I don't see... I also don't see our May 18th minutes, if I'm looking here online either. And so if they're not, we can't actually approve them. So, Robin, can you make a note to check with the town clerk? Okay, so we'll look at both of those again at our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. All right. The next item is present to speak. Again, if you open your Participants tab, if you're on video, and there's a raise your hand at the bottom, you can raise your hand to speak. And so I'll just go as I see them, and then we'll unmute you, and then you can speak. So we'll start with Jim Bullock. Mike, just.
Can you guys hear me?
Record? Yes.
Jim Bullock, Laurel Drive. Couple of points. I think it's very important to hold the state police accountable. And if you guys are not satisfied with their responses or how things work, I think you should work that up the chain of command. Just start going up a layer of management and get the answers that you want as a selectman. And although I think it was fairly obvious that the state police bear a brunt of the communication responsibility, the communication breakdown, we also have, you know, communication is a two-way street. I mean, if we had clear internal policies and procedures on what do we do if a situation like this happens, and how we communicate to the townspeople, I think there's some opportunity for improvement there. So I would encourage us also to look internally and also develop good internal procedures on how we handle these things. And those are my two comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Is there anyone else present to speak on video? Can raise your hand. Okay. Mike, I see we have one caller that's just on the line. If you want to unmute them, and we can see if they wanted to speak. If you're on the phone, we unmuted your phone line if you wanted to speak. Okay. Give them an opportunity again later. There will be another opportunity at the end of the meeting for anyone present to speak. Moving along, there is a very short list of correspondence in your packet. And they are here in the Selectmen's office. The next item is a status report. The fuel tank replacement, we're still waiting for the tank to be delivered, and work to begin. Troy had nothing new as of this afternoon. The budget was adopted by the Board of Finance last Thursday, and a mill rate of 29.99 was set. So we're moving forward with our next fiscal year. I want to thank everyone who participated, the Selectmen, all of our department heads. This was certainly an unusual budget season for all of us. And I really want to thank the Board of Finance for the work that they did. They bore the brunt of adopting a budget in lieu of a referendum and vote by all of our townspeople. So I think they certainly had lots of conversation, and that they took seriously their roles. I want to thank them for all they did. And really, we need to thank Donna, our business manager, for all that she does. She works not just for the town side, but also the Board of Ed side. So this was a lot of work. She found herself doing multiple budgets multiple times because of the new process, at the same time, in this new virtual world, having to learn a new finance system to go live in a month. So thank you to Donna for all her hard work and very late evenings. The next item is a Public Works report. So Public Works has, I don't see Troy here tonight, is they've continued with roadside mowing. They've been fixing curbing and backfill curb around town. They've been working really hard here to put up partitions in different offices to get us ready for having staff come back to work. They were finally able to burn the brush pile at the transfer station, and they've mowed around the Public Works garage and transfer station. I think that's probably just a small list of things that they've been working on. Any questions on that?
I've been seeing some, at least on the Village Hill area, they've been pumping out the drainage basins. So that work seems to be going on again.
Well, I think Troy was able to get a few basins done in this fiscal year to be able to utilize some resources. We had some extra basins that need to be cleaned out next year. And so he was able to get some work done, just a handful, I believe. All right, new business. So we have one item under new business. And as we mentioned, it's discussing creating an emergency communication task force. So I mentioned this at our meeting last Wednesday, the 27th, that I would like to create a task force for emergency communication. I think we saw, you know, some serious gaps all around, and, you know, our reliance on the state police for that need for communication and not having our own system in place to, you know, push the button. But I think it's a bigger conversation, and we touched on that. We would need to decide a couple of things. Who would make up that task force? What the charge of that would be? But we heard loud and clear from our residents that better communication was needed. The events following the May 22nd incident brought light more so, brought to light more so than ever, our need to better communicate with our residents. We discussed many times before, a need to relay information in a more effective way to our residents, emergency information and otherwise. Sorry. Well, we could just go out and purchase a new tool in which to do so, the larger question is, how and when do we use it? And putting some protocols in place. And we just heard tonight a resident speak to just that. I have been speaking with some of our neighboring towns, and there is some interest in having a larger conversation, not of sharing a service, while each town may already have their own. And I believe we should each have our own system of communication. There may be a way to work with protocols, shared protocols in place, so that these things, this particular instance we'll use, for an example, found ourselves on the border of both Stafford and Ashford at different times. And our neighbors in Mansfield felt that the vicinity, but it pretty close enough to Mansfield, that they, they can see a benefit to us sitting down at the table and talking. So I think as part of that, we can look at two different conversations. Some of the different town CEOs and our EMDs sitting down at the table, but then our own task force, so that we can take a look at, you know, what we want to do to make our community feel safer, how we can utilize something to make that happen. We're going to have to find a way to pay for it, and then go out there and, and get the backing we need to make it happen. So I have some thoughts. I'd like to hear from both of you. I think this is a bigger, this doesn't have to be a one-meeting conversation. Let's take some time and think about what we'd like this to be. If we came up with a charge tonight, that would be great, but we may want to take some time to really think about that. John?
Well, I don't think we should be delaying too much, especially the one thing we needed out of this, or that we find that we need out of this, is a way to have a notification system in place for the residents, every verse 911, or Everbridge, or whatever it And I think we could start maybe by asking our emergency services director to look into that and give us back idea of what, what would be the best one, what they would cost, and so on. And then if we want to have the task force, because task forces will take a while, as usual, we could do that, and if we want to put protocols in. Because protocols are going to be difficult, I think that having them in place on this last incident may have caused more harm than good, because I get the feeling that nobody wanted to take the responsibility of deciding what was, what information was to be released to the citizens until they heard from the, at least the troop commander, who wasn't, I believe Lieutenant Palmer is the troop commander, isn't he?
He's the commander of troop, see, yes.
I got the feeling that nobody wanted to do that. And he was out of town by the time he got back in. It was afternoon. And there may have been a delay there. So we have to be very careful. Once we have that system in place, we want to make sure first that it gets used when it needs to be used. And second of all, another problem with these items, or these issues, is that it gets used when it doesn't need to be used. You know, it starts out only for, only for emergencies, and then it ends up, yay, the town team won the state championship or something. So we have to be very careful on that. So, yeah, we don't need to come up with a charge and take care of the protocols and have them do the protocols and all that. But I would rather see us actually move on this rather than wait months or a year.
I mean, I agree. And I don't think anybody on this, at this virtual table, would like to wait months or years to put something in place, especially for, you know, getting a system put in place. So, I mean, I agree. I think whoever has the, most likely has the best information regarding what kind of system makes the most sense for our use, whether that's our emergency management director. I think that's a great idea to get some suggestions to us. And I do think we can move on that fairly simply. But I do agree, I think there are some protocols to put in place. There are a few different levels. You know, I think when to use it is a very good point, John. I mean, this particular scenario, God willing, is very unlikely to happen again. However, we do have car accidents where you need to avoid certain areas. There are downed electrical wires where residents need to be careful and avoid certain areas, you know. So there are ways in which, and currently, those things get emailed to residents, right? Like when roads are closed or something happens.
Only those that are signed up, yeah.
Right. And that was going to be my next point, is, you know, a very small fraction of, you know, our residents or households are signed up for that system. So, so getting people to sign up is a question, but, or something to think about and to process. I think it'll be less challenging now, because there's so much motivation for the communication and connection than it would have been prior to this event happening in Wellington. I think everybody understands now why being connected, that communication is a two-way street. Like, everybody has been saying this. And that, you know, residents need to sign up for the town email alerts and the emergency notification system, whatever we ultimately decide that is. But I think we can move on that piece and get price quotes and whatever for that piece immediately, without having to wait for the committee.
I will point out a couple of things. While I agree with both of you on that, I still think it's important to put a group together and have this conversation. I'll say two things. We have no budgeted funds for a purchase like this currently. And so the first thing we'd need to do, and we are 30 days from the end of the fiscal year, in order to spend it out of a line item, if there's not already funds still there, we would need to get a transfer from the Board of Finance. So we need to know what we were purchasing, how much it was going to be, and get a transfer into that line item from the Board of Finance. So those are all moving pieces that we can take a look at. The timing of it is what make, make things a little tough. If we can't get information, solid information for us to take a look at, into agree on, as a board, it just may mean some special meetings. So if everybody's up for that in the Board of Finance, you know, we can get them to the table. I think we could probably address this. We were looking at a surplus, a potential surplus because of COVID and closing some things down in this fiscal year. So if we could use some of that before we, you know, return the rest of the general fund, which is how it would work, I think that would be the most prudent thing for us to do. John, to your concern about using it for, you know, the team, our favorite team, Just One, or those kinds of things, I've been speaking, like I said, with our surrounding towns. And two of them who have this system have said to me, we've only used it for very specific things. And they, you know, one said they hadn't used it in quite some time. So I think when you, when we put the right thing, systems in place, we aren't using it. Someone says to us, we're having a townwide tag sale. Can we use your system to alert that? We need to put that in place, so we're not utilizing it like that. Does it mean that we may be spending money year after year and not having to use it very often? That's possible. But I think that's more prudent than the situation that we found ourselves in a little over a week ago. So I think we make sure that there is a system in place for how and when to utilize a system, and what it's not used for. I think it would behoove us to allow for some funding, to be able to probably send a mailing out to every household with information on how to sign up for that system when we get it in place. I think that's the best way to get people to make sure they buy into it and sign up for it. They're going to have to opt in with things like their cellphone and/or email, if that's how they'd like us to communicate with them. And it's going to be important that we reach everyone, and we know that that's part of our problem with our email blast. It doesn't go to everyone. It goes for, it only goes to those who want to be involved in things. And that leaves out a great population. I don't have current numbers of who's signed up for that system. We can get that, but it's not nearly the number of residents that we have. So it would benefit us to do a townwide mailing into every mailbox to get that information into people's hands. So that, to me, that is As far as, you know, who we want to bring to the table to be part of this conversation, again, you know, it's bigger than just the three of us. My quick notes here on who I thought this would be made up of, and does it seem like a lot of people? Yes. But it's a big conversation that involves moving pieces. Law enforcement, our EMD, a member of EMS, someone from the Board of Selectmen, Board of Ed, Board of Finance, and I would propose three residents. Yeah, I wish we could have a lot more, but, and I think we know, the table gets too big.
How many, how many are you proposing though, exactly? That's, that's a pretty big.
Yes, it is.
A pretty big group right there.
It is, John, but I think it's important that it's not just those who are doing the work on the town side and on our different boards and commissions, but hearing from some residents. And after that meeting, I, before we were done with that meeting, I had two, for sure, two residents who wanted to participate and had already sent me information on that. I'm not saying that's who they would be, but there, there's a need, and there's a desire for people to help make sure that as a whole. And they were the names, although I'm familiar with their names, they're not anyone that we typically see. It either are our board meetings or members of our boards. So I think it, you know, it's important that we have a good cross-section of residents to, you know, to represent the concerns. They, look, we, I can't remember the last time we had a meeting. I think there were more people on that call than there were even at the last meeting we had, where the school building committee was a hot topic. This is important to people, and it's important to me. And yes, nine people seems like a lot, but I think the people, that that cross-section that represents are all vital members of that, would be vital members of that task force, and bring all the partners together.
It doesn't seem like that unwieldy of a group to me, to be honest. We certainly have larger and smaller committees than that out there, but everybody that you recommended sounds like it makes sense. The, my only question is, is, when you say EMS, is that...
So our fire service, all we have in Wellington is fire. Fire and EMS. I shouldn't say just fire.
Okay, that was going to be my question.
As one of our chiefs sits here, you know, someone representing that side.
Yep. Yeah, that makes sense.
You know, we, when we sit down at CIP, which is another incredibly important committee, we set, you know, at least 10 people. So, you know, we sit down with our fire services efficiency committee. It's more people than that. So while nine people seems like a lot, and it is a lot of voices, I think they're all important voices.
So did, did you want to start working on a draft for the, for the charge for the committee?
I can. If you two have any thoughts, and you want to, you know, put them on paper, we can discuss them, and we can, you know, work from there. So I'll start with the draft, and we'll look at it in our next meeting. I'll start looking at, I see Stuart's just joining us. He and I have talked a couple of times. I know he's already reached out. We know that Mansfield uses one system. Stafford uses a completely different system. They use Everbridge. I believe it's Code Red is what Mansfield is using. Ashford does not have a system. I've spoken to Talon, but he hasn't given me specifics. We're going to sit down and meet. I'd be curious, Alex, do you know if Talon uses Everbridge? Or if they have their own? They do use Everbridge. Okay.
They use Everbridge.
Okay. So Mansfield is the lone wolf out there using something a little bit different. And so we'll get some prices on that, and hopefully I can get some information to you all. And if we need to have a meeting to discuss that separate, if we can get everything together in time, we can look at a potential purchase there. Okay, so I would ask you then, for our next, our next regular meeting. So we'll look at two weeks from today, which is the 15th. We'll look to have a bigger discussion around this and potentially action on starting a task force and naming individuals, not necessarily individuals, but represent, general overall representation and a charge. Okay. All right. So anything you want to share before that, feel free to share with Robin, and we can get it to everyone, so we can take a look at it before the meeting, if possible. Anything else on this topic? All right. So I'll move on to our COVID.
Sorry, Eric.
Yes, yes.
One question. So that would be a sort of our own internal working group that would, okay, because we, and you mentioned in earlier in the conversation, that other bordering towns would also like to be part of the conversation, too.
Looking at shared protocol. So we're working on potentially, starting to set up a meeting where, you know, we come to the table kind of together. So maybe myself and our EMD, and, you know, the, someone from Mansfield and their EMD, Talon, and there's in Stafford, and there's. And so far, the four town, four out of the five have agreed to sit down at the table, at least. Let's talk about it and see, and get everybody together. Virtual, virtual table, of course.
This might be slightly off topic, but out of curiosity, do you know if any of those other towns that have their own system sent anything out?
They did not.
They did not? Okay.
They received similar information that we did, as to the need, and it being an isolated incident. So the message was common. And so those who had their own system also did not utilize theirs. And there was questions from, from some of them as to whether or not they should. But when they received the same information that we did, they acted this in the same manner. So. And again, because things were so fluid, and so close to, like I said, both Stafford and Ashford with some of the reports early on, and then Mansfield, I think they all asked the same question, and were led to believe that there was, and we heard that from Lieutenant Palmer, that in the beginning, they did not believe there was need, and then they thought the information that they did have was spread wide enough, which we know is not the case.
So that goes back again to make sure that there's protocol.
That's why we talked about the need, maybe for our own, you know, as a region, protocols in place, and how we could, you know, if there's a message by one that we can share with each other, that then they could put out.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. So I'll move on to old business, COVID-19 update. I'll give you a little bit of information statewide. Apologized here. Okay, so the state, while we've had an increase in people who've tested positive and fatalities and tests conducted overall, we still have a decrease in hospitalizations. So we have a total of 42,740 positive cases in Connecticut. There are currently 454 hospitalized, 3,964 total fatalities, and 259,320 total tests in Connecticut thus far. So to those, families of those, almost 4,000 individuals, you know, we think of them, and our hearts go out to them. This is real. Although our numbers are going down, the state opened recently, and we'll see what the results of some of that are. If our numbers continue to go down, we've been very fortunate on this side of the state, and our numbers have been small. In Wellington, we now have 13 positive cases. They're now starting to give us information on probable cases daily as we get the list of positive cases. So we have 13 positive and zero probable cases in Wellington. So our numbers have gone up a little bit, but certainly very small. So we wish all of those well. Some of them may have recovered. That's, I don't have specific numbers on recoveries. I will tell you that all of our first responders who had, we let you know that had tested positive, have all now tested negative, and are able to be back at work. So we are... and are able to be back at work. So we are thankful that they have recovered and are back to normal circumstances for now, new normal, I should say. So thank them for all that they've done. As far as here in Wellington, we are still closed to the public, but taking appointments and we're going to continue that for the foreseeable future. We're planning for next Monday, June 8th, to have at least one staff member in every department regularly in the town hall. And my hope is we're aiming for June, the last week of June, first week of July, June 29th, to have all of our staff back here and working together. Still closed to the public at that time, but having everyone here. So you heard me talk about Public Works making some changes so that people could work in offices together without having to wear a mask all day. So there's some barriers between people. There are barriers between the public and each of our offices. And we're working on some other safety protocols. We did look at the guidance for offices, talked about automatic hand dryers. I think I mentioned those hand dryers, soap dispensers and water faucets in the bathroom. So today we got a quote for five, five automatic water dispensers, and it was almost $1,000 apiece. The guidance says when possible. I'm not sure that that $1,000 won't increase once they start working on such modern technology in our incredibly old building. The superintendents, we, we had a quote from the same company to do the school as well. They're looking at an incredible sum of money in order to do theirs. And again, we just looked at one in each of the bathrooms. The public bathrooms upstairs have three sinks in each of them, and the downstairs bathrooms have two sinks in each, so one would be automatic and one would not. But I'm just not sure, we, you know, we don't know that we'll get all of that funding back, we would hope. I guess I'd like some feedback from you all as to whether or not you think that that's worth us going ahead and moving forward with. Right now, we only have the automatic paper towel dispensers. Robin hasn't been able to access soap dispensers. They are in high demand.
I would imagine so. So there needs to be one of each in every bathroom?
So that was, look, they're suggested, it, it's recommended that we put them in when, wherever possible. So there's no requirement at all. It is certainly a costly expense. We didn't, instead of looking at replacing all of them, we looked at one. I, I knew they were going to be pricey. I'm not sure that I thought they cost us that much between the faucet and installation. So.
I tend to like Liza's idea of one in each bathroom.
That price was for one in each bathroom. The quote we got was for five, and it was one in each bathroom. There, there are two upstairs, two downstairs, and then there's one in the human services area that many of her clients will use when they come in that area. So if you went into the ladies' room upstairs, there are three faucets, only one with this quote, only one of them would be an automatic faucet. So yeah, if that was for all of them, I would say that was a great deal. We had 11, 3, 6, 10, we had 11 total. And so they quoted us on five of them. So to say Robin's and my jaws dropped this afternoon is a understatement.
Well, I have more, even more jaws that have dropped.
Sure. Again, we would, we would ask for reimbursement from FEMA and hope that that was a covered cost.
And it's, but you said it's not required, or is it required in any way for like opening back up to the public or?
It is not. Robin, can I ask you a quick, I don't have the handbook on me. I believe the language was where possible.
Yeah, that's exactly what it says. I can dig it up.
Robin is putting all this together. She's our administrator for our reopen, which is why I asked her. It's there, the state is not saying in order to open, you have to have these, you know, we do have to do some things as far as protocols and face masks and keeping people separate and a distance apart, but retrofitting our building was not a requirement, but it does say whenever possible, wherever possible. So there's some flexibility there. So it's not something that I would have just on my own said, let's go ahead and do it, which is why I bring it up to you all.
I mean, I, I don't know. My thought is, you know, we have the space upstairs, which is the large function. But for the foreseeable future, we're not gathering.
Right.
You know, so, I mean, I don't, unless you said there's a surplus, unless we end up with a significant surplus, given all the things that we just talked about in this meeting alone. And we have it in the surplus and it makes sense to consider, you know, the, the most commonly used bathroom spaces. Then that makes sense to me, but I think because we're not allowed to have lots of gatherings or lots of people rather in a gathering. We're talking about mostly staff use, and when you're talking about staff use, you can regulate more cleaning. Right? You can do more regular cleaning and have, you know, those cleaning pro, protocols.
We could do that on our own.
Right, and can't necessarily regulate that as much if you have like an event with 50 people there. You can't make sure that everybody's wiping down the faucets or whatever, but since we're right now for the foreseeable future, just talking about staff. I don't see this as being oppressing.
Robin, you want to weigh in on that?
So I have the, the protocol here, and it actually doesn't even mention water faucets. It says touchless, touchless appliances. Install touchless appliances wherever possible, including paper towel, soap dispensers, water fountains. That's it, water fountains, not even faucets. And then it says doors, make doors no touch. So it doesn't even really.
Doesn't lay those out specifically. You know, it, it says appliances and then includes a couple, including others. So Phil and I both looked at some information. We both saw it as, you know, this being a potential, but again, not expecting the kind of expense that it was, or what it will mean to put it in an old building like ours.
I think the school is a different conversation, right? And that's, and the Board of Ed is obviously gonna have to talk about that.
Absolutely.
I have three children in that school system and I can promise you, they're not eager to index up after themselves every time they, you know, wash their hands. But for the town office building, I think at this point, I don't see it as being urgent, given the low traffic flow that's gonna be in and out of that building.
And part of that, and while I agree with you, Liza, we are going to open to the public and need to open to the public at some point. And with the discussion of this COVID not going away anytime soon, or a vaccine happening rather quickly, if we do open to the public, again, we have to remember, we don't have our own maintenance staff here. We do not have maintenance. We have cleaning service that comes in two nights a week. So while school's not open currently, the schools have offered to help us do a midday cleaning and wipe down of some of these surfaces. That will change if schools open and we open to the public. So it's just another thing we want to think about. And do I think we would have the money left over at the end of the year, before the end of the fiscal year? Yes. If we get a reimbursement, it would reimburse that and it would go back into the general fund where those, you know, funds would eventually have gone to. And the state now, I know I had reported to you all that the state was going to pay for all of our initial expenses, and then we go to FEMA. Surprise, things change. I see Alex shaking his head because we were on the call when they told us it was happening one way and then another. Now we need to apply to FEMA first for the 75% reimbursement, and then the state is planning to reimburse the 25%. And I say planning to because there's no guarantee that they're gonna pick up the rest of it, or that every expense we have will be accepted as an expense by FEMA. They haven't given us any specifics on, there's, this is not your typical kind of emergency, where we know what kinds of expenses go with a tornado or a blizzard, a large-scale storm like that, or a hurricane. This is all encompassing from new water fountains and soap dispensers, to face masks for your staff, to overtime for your EMS workers, to Plexiglas to keep the public from interacting with us a little too closely. So there's an IT, how we pay for these virtual meetings now. So it's all encompassing, but it's, it's an expense that, you know, I didn't hesitate on some of the things that we need to do, but this is, this is one that, and I can't lie, I'm a little nervous, just gonna open a can of worms when they start working on these faucets. So our beautiful, beautiful old building may come back. So unless you both are vehemently opposed to it, we can move forward with, again, just the one in each bathroom, if the funds are there. Okay, all right, thank you. So again, staff back, at least someone in every office next week. While those who aren't here in the office will still work from home, and then hopefully on June 29th, we'll all be here working. And it'll make it a little bit easier to assist our residents, certainly come tax season, which begins July 1st. Any other questions about COVID? On top of Robin's normal duties, like I said, she's administering our back-to-work protocols. And so I want to thank her, COVID has certainly added a lot to her already full plate. And appreciate all that she's doing at that ti, at this time. So thank you. All right, seeing no other discussion. Alex, did you have anything you would like to add? Or Stuart? I see Stuart on the line now.
Just from the fire department side, we're still, staff still remains split up between the two stations, and that's gonna remain probably throughout the summer at this point, just so that we can social distance. With inside our firehouse, trying to so, social distance to people just doesn't work very well. So having both stations doing it that way works much better. So other than that, everybody's back to work and move forward.
Stuart, anything you want to add?
There we go. No, nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, actually, one thing FEMA or Demis did tell us again that the end will be coming at some point soon for giving out supplies and you should establish your own methods of purchasing if you feel you continue to need anything COVID-related.
Yeah, I think we're, you know, trying to take advantage of wipes from them while we can, because that's probably one of the hardest things we've been had to obtain. So I think we're good with soap and, and those items for now. So thank you, Stuart. All right, so we'll go to present to speak. Again, if you would like to speak and you're on video, if you open up the participants tab on the bottom and use the raise your hand feature. We will, I will call on those as I see them. If you would like to speak, you can do so now. Not all at once, folks. Okay. Again, Mike, it looks like there's, besides Stuart, there's one person on the phone. We want to unmute them in the event they'd like to speak. And now they're gone. Okay. Oh, okay. You can unmute yourself, Elaine. Identify yourself for the record.
There you go. Elaine Newcomb, 28, Fermier Road. Do you know what they mean by the touchless doors?
I, I do believe the doors that you wouldn't have to open and close with your hand, that would be an unbelievable expense if faucets are $1,000. I can't imagine what touchless doors would be.
Well, when I hear touchless doors, that could mean electric doors. That could mean, elect, I mean, a touchless door to me is kind of, I turn around backwards and push on.
You can only go one way, though. You can't open it the other way. So touchless, I think would mean those.
You can. If it swings, you can.
Yeah, so I, I can tell you for sure, our exterior doors would not just swing. So those are the kinds of items that they're talking about. So I, I can honestly tell you that is not an expense we looked at.
But we have no idea what that might mean, right?
It's broad. It would mean doors that you do not need to use your hand.
Cost-wise, we have no idea.
I do not.
Right, at this time.
Correct.
There, there was an article in the Current this week, which I hope everybody saw regarding the summer school thoughts, of the draft thoughts. Did you happen to see that?
I would leave any discussion of summer school to our Board of Education.
Well, my point is that there, the draft discussion for the buses included no more than 10 people on a bus. So I understand that that, you know, that falls under the, the education area. However, there, there could be an enormous financial impact if they're really thinking about. They were talking about an empty row and one kid in each row on each end and a blank row, but it, it really is quite elaborate. So, and also it would, I would think mean that a lot of, a lot of districts wouldn't, they wouldn't even have enough buses to accommodate, within a certain timeframe, to accommodate this sort of thing. So I don't know when that draft is getting finalized, when any of that, do you haven't, do you know when any of that information will be available, so we know what they're thinking?
I don't, and I would defer you again to the Board of Education. All of those decisions would be theirs and that's where the discussion would happen.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else present to speak? Okay, seeing none in the raised hand area. I will move on to good and welfare. I'm gonna, I want to remind everyone that our town meetings are still, are all virtual. And they are all being shared on the town's website, all the agendas and meetings. And then shared after the meeting on our town's YouTube page, so someone could go back and watch them. And that is Town of Wellington CT Official is the name of our YouTube channel. And thanks to Mike Tomato for putting all of our meetings up there and/or helping some of us less tech savvy put the one, put meetings on that YouTube page. So thank you to Mike. Again, that's Town of Wellington CT Official. Dog licensing begins today as it's June 1st in the town clerk's office. Previous dog owners should have either received a mailing from the town clerk's office, or they should be in the next day or so. Any new residents can see the town clerk's pay, I'm sorry, new dog owners can get information from the town clerk's page for details. There is now an online method in order to register your dogs, and there's been a 30-day grace period because of COVID. So typically you have till June 30th to register your dogs. Now you have through July to do so. Our animal control officer is planning to hold a rabies clinic next Saturday, June 13th, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM here at the town office building. You need exact cash only. It's only for Wellington residents. Only for Wellington residents. Any donations for help for current and future animals is welcome. The doc, the town clerk will also be offering dog licensing that day. All social distancing rules will be in place. So people will be asked to stay in their vehicles until they're requested. You have to, you must wear a mask when attended by a volunteer, and then they'll take pets a short distance from the car in order to go ahead and administer the rabies vaccine. So that's next Saturday, June 13th, from 10 to 12 here at the TOB. Again, $10 exact cash only, and it's only for Wellington residents. Today, Jenny Arpin, our human services director, held a food drive. If you recall, we had begun, we were in the process of a food drive on May twenty-second. So we had quite the hall today and very generous folks who were able to give to help us fill the food pantry. And as a result, next Friday, June twelfth, will be a food distribution, it'll be food, masks and household supplies, it is for Wellington residents only and ID will be required. Jenny, if you don't mind, I see you here, I did not write down in my notes the time, last one was twelve to two.
Yes, this one is from ten AM until noon, so that's on June the twelfth, from ten AM until noon.
Ten AM to noon, so we'll look to share information about that as well, so again, next Friday, June twelfth, thank you. Troopsy, I have spoken with Lieutenant Palmer this, just this afternoon. And he's assured me they're continuing regular patrols in the area and making their presence known. They recognize that our residents may still have some residual concerns and/or fear with everything that transpired. And so they, they are still making themselves known here in town, so if you see them driving through, that may be explained why. If any resident finds them, resident finds themselves needing to talk with someone about the events of last week, or certainly anything else, please contact our human services department at eight-six-zero-four-eight-seven-three-one-one-nine. And Jenny will help assist you in finding someone that can speak with you and getting you any assistance that you need. So we don't want anyone out there not to have a method to be able to talk to someone. All right, if you know someone who's in need, please help them reach out to us or help us reach them. And if you drove by Hall School in the last four or five days, you've probably seen a beautiful display of signs to honor our eighth graders. It certainly, look, I know it's not how they thought their time at Hall School and Wellington Public Schools would come to an end, but neither did we. I, I hope to stand under my banner, I know John likes to stand under his as well as we honor all of those. So you, those young people and their families are all in our hearts as they end this chapter and prepare for the next one. Want to wish them luck at E O Smith or Wyndham Tech or wherever high school takes them. So good luck to those young men and young women. So it's, it's different times, but by the time we meet again, they will be Hall School alumni. And just hard to believe, including our own Ms. Campbell's. Last one, so, so we wish them well. And lastly, I'll ask you all to stay well and stay Wellington strong. And with that, I move to adjourn, oh, John or Liza, I apologize, you have anything you'd like to add?
Just that I noticed on the, on Facebook today, the library announced its opening on Friday for returns only, so I'm assuming that those who had, had
Yes.
books out all this time and now return them.
Yeah, so they will be beginning this Friday, June fifth, they will begin taking returns of items. And I believe it's next Saturday, the thirteenth, they will begin curbside pickup, curb side pickup. So you'll be able to go online and order any new materials and get them picked up curbside, so they'll be able to start servicing our residents again. So yes, we shared some information from that, they put some videos online, so we look forward to having them back. Staff came back last week at the library, so I know they're, they're all happy to be back and missing having people in the library, but we will get there too. But this way, they're going to take some time to take them in and let books sit and people can feel safe about taking out new items, so we'll look for their protocols. Thank you, John. All right, with that, I will move to adjourn at seven-twenty-seven.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you all. Happy June.